Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January the 26th, 2021. It's 9:00 a.m. We're in the Central Judiciary Room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. This meeting is pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act. And the first thing that we have today is again, Dr. Bill Miller of the Hood County Pastor Council has brought us, a distinguished speaker, to give us the invocation. She has been with us before. She's an excellent person and an excellent speaker. I call Kim Irwin of the Executive Director of the Brazos Pregnancy Clinic.
Thank you. Would you pray with me, please? Mighty Lord God, King of the universe, who commanded the world to be in existence, I thank you, Lord God, for this day. I thank you for the sunshine you've given us and for this county and for this state and this country, Father God. Please forgive us of our sins, Father. Help us to humble our hearts, to not hold petty grievances towards each other. Help us to soften our heart towards our brothers and sisters. And as this Commissioner's Court becomes in session, Father God, please be with each and every single person here, Lord. Help them to judge correctly. Help them to have the heart of Samuel, the love of David, and the faithfulness of Solomon and the intelligence. Help us to do your will this day, Lord God, to hold you at all times in our hearts and our minds, to do your will and not ours. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Ms. Irwin. That was a very nice invocation. Okay. The next item is special presentations, of which we have none, but we do have some service awards. Ms. Melissa Welborn.
Yes, sir. Good morning. We have one service award this morning for David Larnar.
Judge, Commissioners, David's been with us for 20 years. Very valuable asset to our department.
Okay. We got to have roads, don't we? Don Lenny?
Sir.
We got to have roads, don't we?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay.
And drainage.
Thank you, Judge.
Okay. Is Tona not here to?
No, sir, she is not. So I'll get her if she wants to. We'll recommend her come over today.
In February. Yeah, Tona's only been here for only 30 years, but I guess she's in here. But she'll be here in February then. Okay, the next item concerns a citizen's comments pertaining to agenda items. The sheriff has public participation forms that you're asked to fill out. And they have to be filled out and turned in to the sheriff, who in turn will give them to Ms. Katie Lang, who's our county clerk. She will keep a track of them, put you in order, and you will be called on to speak at the agenda item. And but if you don't have the public participation form filled out prior to the agenda item, you will not be allowed to speak. That came up last week, or not last week, at last Commissioner's Court hearing, didn't it, Ms. Shielander?
Yes, it did.
Okay, so we all understand what the rules are on this deal. Okay. So that brings us next to the consent agenda. And Commissioner Eagle, you said that you wish to pull a couple of items on the consent agenda, specifically item B, dedicated accounting line item transfers, and which is B2 to 3. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's 7B2 and 3. It needs to move over to 8B1.
Okay. Which will be discussed in the financial business by Ms. Kidd. Ms. Kidd, are you understanding what we've just done here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Are there any other removals from the consent agenda? Well, do I hear a motion to go ahead and approve the consent agenda with the exception of what has been pulled to discuss under B in financial?
So may.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the items pulled by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those against approving the consent agenda with the exception, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Now, we're under two. Road operations. Mr. Lenny, you don't have anything for us today?
No, we don't.
Okay. None here in the road ops, but we do have Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. All right, the first item we have today, we have applications that have been accepted for replats of Orchards 12B lots 3425R and 3426R in Reserve Area A1. And replat of 144 Place lots 1R and 1R1. And a replat of Orchards on the Brazos lot 33R1 through 33R3. All these replats are in Precinct 2. Staff recommends setting the public hearing for March 9th, 2021.
March 9th?
Yes, sir.
Of 2021.
Judge, I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for March 9th, 2021, for the Orchards on the Brazos 12B lots 3425R, 3426R, and Reserve Area A1. Also, 144 Place lots 1R and 1R1. In addition, Orchards on the Brazos lots 33R, 33R3 in Precinct 2.
Second.
Motion had made by Commissioner Cotton to set the public hearings, as stated, for Orchards Place 144 Place and Orchards on the Brazos, second by Commissioner Eagle, for March 9th, 2021. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, the second item we have is a public hearing to discuss the replat that is combining of lots 1361 and 1362 of Pecan Plantation, Unit 15. It'll be creating a 1.257 acre lot called 1361R. The property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 2. Will be served by AMUD and On-Sat wastewater facilities.
Okay, we're going to now convene into a public hearing to discuss the con plantation Unit 15 Lot 1361R. Tell us about it.
Well, staff has reviewed the replat and recommends approval as presented. All right, I've read it all before.
Let's see. That'll be... Is there anybody, Mr. Jared or Mr. LaCroix, to jolt? No. Y'all didn't want to speak on any one of these items? You have item 8B... Oh, that's B1. Is that what you wanted to speak on, sir?
I'm here representing the fellows on the last...
Number four. That's the last one.
Is that either one of these that we're discussing right now? It's not?
No.
Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, just wanted to make sure then on the deal. Okay, so you recommend approval. Any further discussion? Okay. We're going to reconvene now into Commissioner's Court. Do I hear a motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the following replat, con plantation Unit 15 Lot 1361R.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the replat on Pecan Plantation Unit 15 Lot 1361R, second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
All right, third item, we have a public hearing to discuss and consider the concept plan of Rolled Stone Estates.
Okay. We're going to reconvene now into a public hearing to discuss Rolled Stone Estates in Precinct 1. What do you have?
This concept plan was tabled at the January 12th Commissioner's Court. The property is located at 1900 Campbell Road, Tuller, Texas. The gross side area of this concept plan is 93 acres of the W Hickman survey, abstract number 216, J Hibbin survey, abstract number 225, and proposes to create 24 single-family lots. The proposed concept plan is in the rural district in Precinct 1 and will be served by well and on-site sewage facilities. The proposed concept plan proposes to construct approximately 3,480 feet, linear feet of public asphalt streets. There are no variances associated with this concept plan. Staff has reviewed concept plan. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Still asking for approval. Okay, any further discussion in public hearing? Okay, we're going to reconvene now into Commissioner's Court. Do I hear a motion regarding development under 3A?
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the concept plans of Rolled Stone Estates as presented.
Motion had made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the concept plan on Rolled Stone Estates. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay.
Last item, we have a final plat to discuss and consider. The final...
...of Bella Oaks subdivision. The property is located at 1508 North Tuller, Texas. The gross side area of this... Anyway, the purpose is creating non-single-family lots. The final plat is located in the rural district in Precinct 1 and will be served by well and on-site sewage facilities.
As a portion of the concept, it was approved at the November 24th, 2020 Commission. There are no new streets to be constructed with this final plat. Proposed today will be under existing...
We've already approved it. It's too late. You're going to tell them.
Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat of Bella Oaks subdivision lots 1 through 9 as presented.
Second.
A motion had been made in second to approve the final plat on Bella Oaks additions, lots 1 through 9, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Mr. Stark, wherever... Mr. Stark, if you're here? Because, Mr. Stark, your motion came... Your agenda was not brought to me until after we had already voted on the Rolled Stone Edition, so... Okay, next we have the financial situation here. Ms. Becky Kidd.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. If you are in agreement, we will go ahead and discuss the two line items transfers that Mr. Eagle wanted to discuss under item business to be discussed and considered for approval, As you know, I have sat down with each of you and discussed these and wanted to make sure that everything was clear and transparent, but I'm perfectly fine with discussing it in front of whomever. So I'd like to answer any questions regarding these. This is the Fund 70, which is excess sales tax. We are utilizing excess sales tax monies to pay off the library. And the second part of that is Fund 92. That's where that money is being moved to, to keep it in our debt service account and pay off the library. You good with that, Mr. Eagle?
Yeah, I just wanted to just, you know, we did talk about this. Becky and I did, and I just wanted to make sure that we had this on the agenda where if someone wanted to speak to it, they could. And what it is, is we allot a certain amount of money each year in our budget for sales for anticipated sales tax.
Yes, sir. 3.9 million.
3.9 million dollars. And, you know, when the COVID stuff hit, we were concerned during the budget cycle that everything was going to go south, and we may not collect that 3.9 million. And it turns out, not only did we go over the 3.9 million, but we collected 1.455 million above the 3.9. So I wanted to make sure people understood that what's going on with the sales tax here. Apparently, you know, some of the... A lot of local businesses are out of business, but I guess Walmart and the big box stores are really kicking it. So I just wanted to make sure people understood what was going on here. And we moved some of the transfers from the consent agenda that deals with this. That's all this is, the Fund 70 excess sales tax, et cetera. Now, there's only a few... There's only certain things that can be done with excess sales tax. And one of them, and correct me anytime, one of them is we can pay debt off.
That's pretty much it.
So we've got three years, is that correct?
Yes.
This payment we've already paid for the library expansion.
Yes.
And we've got three years left on that, which is going to be about the 920,000, right?
Plus some interest. So we're paying this loan off in three years instead of seven.
Right. So this excess sales tax will be going to pay a debt off. And I just wanted to make sure, is the county tax note, Series 218 for redemption, is that connected to this on this next item?
The approved certification of special revenue.
Now, it says...
No, number two.
Number two, is that...
Number two is a contract, basically, with the bond council. They write this up and agree that we can pay it off early and put all the numbers in place, so everything is completely transparent.
But number two connects with...
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's... I just wanted to make sure of that.
And in paying this off early, the original interest on this loan was 254 plus thousand dollars. We saved 127,000 dollars by paying this off early.
Awesome. Good job.
So if it's okay, will you approve those two line item transfers?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to go back to the consent agenda that we moved over here. And if you look at number 7B2 and 3, those two line items go to this issue, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion that we take the excess proceeds from the sales tax, as discussed, to pay off the library note per your line item transfers that's depicted on the current consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Okay. A motion has been made in second to approve the line item transfers under the consent agenda into the approval of the certification for special revenue received after the start of the fiscal year of...
Judge, that's a different one. You've approved the budget amendments.
Oh, you're talking about the 1,455?
That's a separate agenda item. He's just wanting to go back under...
So you're taking the second item first? You're going to take the 1,455, 461?
Well, I just want to make sure you approve the line item transfer first that was under consent, then we can move on to these, sir.
That'd be your 7B2 and 3. That's what he pulled off. And that's what he's made a motion to approve. Isn't that right, Dave?
Yes, sir. Regarding the payoff of the library. And that'll cover number two as well, right?
So he's made a motion and Jack seconded it, right? Yes?
Well, we'll do one first, then we can do two.
Okay.
Dave already made the motion to approve it.
Okay. Motion had been made by Commissioner Eagle to make the line item transfers in accordance with what you have put in financial B1. Is that correct?
No, on the consent agenda. The items that were on the consent agenda, they're still there unless you want... Where do you want to approve them, gentlemen? I don't care.
That's what I'm confused about.
Yeah.
You want to leave them in consent agenda? We're going to transfer them?
Wherever you want.
We're consenting for them right now if we vote on this, right?
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
I just, I want to make sure there's no issues because...
Well, that's what I'm trying to help you out here, Ms. Kidd, so that you cast the outside audit.
Wherever you gentlemen decide.
Okay. All right. Has anybody... Did somebody approve Commissioner Eagle's motion?
I think Jack seconded.
Approved by Commissioner Wilson. Are there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against this, say nay. Motion carries 5-0. Okay. What else do you have, Ms. Kidd?
All right, number one, under financial, approved certifications for special revenue received after the start of the fiscal year, per Local Government Code, Section 111.0108. This, the first one, the unanticipated revenue, the 2,24,415 is the money we've received from CARES revenue. And this is grant revenue, state revenue. You don't even have to declare it, but I wanted to be transparent and make sure that it was on this form. And the second part of that is the 1,455,461. We've already discussed that. That's the excess sales tax. And I have a form that's just saying, we have received this revenue and where you intend to use it. I've signed it, and it needs to be signed by everyone else, but I believe Mr. Eagle has something to discuss on this.
Yes, I do. And what I would... What I'm going to work towards is I think we should table this, but I'm going to explain why first. We're talking about approving a... An amount of over 2 million dollars that has come into the county via the CARES Act. And once again, in the effort to be totally transparent, I believe that, in my opinion, that needs to be very transparent. And we've got it listed on here as unanticipated revenue, but it's really CARES Act money. And I don't... I looked for... What I wanted to see with this particular item is something like we did with the excess sales tax, where you've got fund in, fund out, here's where it's going, and it's all itemized. We have no itemization of this 2,24,415. And what I would suggest is that we table this till we get a chance to get more clarity on what this 2 million bucks is for. And we've also gotten a... My understanding is... And I haven't seen any ledger sheets on what's gone where. And I've looked... I looked at the... Let's see. Just to give you an idea, I did go look at the check register, and I didn't see anything because the money that went to the pay for this mobile unit that we just purchased last time is coming out of this CARES Act money. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So I don't see a check in the check register that paid that yet.
It paid it last court. We did the budget amendment and approved the payment last court for that. That's where your budget amendment came into play. And again, this, the CARES money doesn't even have to be on this special revenue. And the reason it says unanticipated, because when we did the budget last summer, you did not... We did not anticipate this money at all. Therefore, we didn't budget anything. And I waited until we had received every dollar back before I presented this. That's why it's here. Again, it's not even necessary, but I want to be as transparent as I can. We did pass a budget amendment last court allocating the monies. Most of it is in the line account that says Hood County Emergency Management. That's where the bulk of that budget is. The rest of it is in a little bit of salary. There's a $50,000 budget for limited money that we should receive, and then 284,000 in capital outlay in that budget that we did last court.
So I've... Okay, well, I appreciate that explanation. So I've gone back and looked at our minutes, and we actually voted on the budget on September the 15th, 2020, about four months ago. And so you're saying that we did not anticipate funds coming in from CARES Act, when that's all I've heard for several months?
I don't count any money till it's in the bank, sir. I had no idea we could have got 50,000. We just did not know.
Well, do you think it would be a good idea to itemize this out so people can understand what is being... What's being paid out of it?
Well, everyone who's asked for that has received it. I can run a detailed report on the money that has come in and been spent out of Fund 101 for anyone who requested it through an open records request, and I have sent several of those out lately. It's very clear in there. It shows you the revenue that's come in and the expenditures. And the budget amendment's been done, and it shows... And again, that large amount of money in the line account that says Hood County Emergency Management, again, that's a placeholder. When you have budget hearings this summer, decide where you want to spend it. Decide... Anytime you want to decide to move it or spend it on something else, that's your right. And I encourage you to look at that and give me some ideas.
So your statement today, because I've got the check register from this time. I went back and looked at the check register from last court that was submitted. I don't see a check for this.
You got documentation for that in court that day?
Oh, on the day of court?
Yes, sir.
That two people voted to do that?
Unfortunately, yes, sir.
So again, I would like to make a motion to table this item until we've had a chance to get a clear understanding and itemized statement of what is being done with this CARES Act money, because I think we owe it to the taxpayers as to what we're doing with it, considering we passed a budget and didn't plan any of this in it. So I would like to make a motion to table this item until further notice. Maybe the next court, maybe we can have a special workshop where we can explain to the taxpayers what we're... What we are doing with this money that's coming in on the CARES Act, which my understanding, there's potential to have to repay some of it if it's not done correctly. So that's my motion to table it.
When you say this item, you mean the entire B1?
No, we've already passed the second... We got two items in B1. We've already...
That's what I'm saying. We passed the excess sales tax proceed.
Yes, sir.
So this is for the 2,24,415 for Fund 101.
And it's...
Yes, sir.
And the special revenue item is also for the 1,455, 461, the additional sales tax. Both of these are on this sheet that I had passed out. They're both on here. I can strike one off. You can... It's up to you. Again, it's just being transparent. That's what I'm trying to do. Because we have budgeted for that money. That has been budgeted. It was in the last court. And now that I'm absolutely sure on the money that we have, again, I don't even have to present this. It's grant money, but I want everyone to know.
Act money, not grant. Is that correct?
Well, it's... The reason they call it grant money, the outside auditors call it grant money, is, again, it was not anticipated. It is coming from the state. We have done all the... Checked all the boxes to get this money through J Webster. He has done all the reporting. He went through Tedom. He went through a rigorous process to get this money for us. And I'm just saying, here's what we got.
So it's really not taxpayers' money, like taxpayers paying property taxes or sales tax?
Correct.
It's money that the federal government had allocated to each state, and then if each state documented what they had spent on certain items regarding COVID...
Correct.
You could get the money, the CARES Act money. That's what this money is, the...
Yes, sir.
2,24,000 dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that 2,24,000 dollars has not been allocated for expenditures as of yet?
Yes, sir. The 2,24,000, that's what we did last court...
Okay.
With a budget amendment.
So we've already allocated that money?
Yes.
And so I...
That was done rather quickly.
I guess I'm confused on what Commissioner Eagle wants. That broken out and identified what we spent it on?
And it was on the budget amendment.
So then why do we have this on the agenda if it's already been done?
I'm just trying to be transparent on the whole amount for anybody that wants to know.
Well, so am I, and I'm asking to table this so we can do a spreadsheet on where this money's going. I don't see where it's all going.
It can only go anywhere if you approve it, sir. It's in a large... The large amount of it is in a line account for you gentlemen to do whatever you choose.
So this comes straight out of the CARES Act website. CARES Act requires that payments for the Coronavirus Relief Fund only be used to cover expenses that, one, are necessary expenditures incurred due to a public health emergency with respect to the coronavirus disease 2019. Two, were not accounted for in the budget, most recently approved as of March 27th, and we approved our budget in September. And the March 27th is the date the CARES Act was enacted. And three, were incurred during the period that begins March 1st, 2020, ends December 31st, 2021. So we've got till the end of December. But it, but the question is, we, to me, in my opinion, we still need to lay out what we're spending that for so we can ensure that the money that's being spent from the CARES Act money went to items that were necessary expenditures due to a public health emergency. I don't, I still don't see that. And again, I would, I'm going to renew my motion to table this until we get more information on it.
Commissioner Eagle, from what I have seen of the CARES Act expenditures, it's, it's for hand sanitizer mask and things of that nature that come right hand in hand with COVID. That's what they have been doing. But again, that is why there is a large amount in a line account for you gentlemen to decide what to do. It's up to you now. Not me or Jay. It's up to you gentlemen. And that's why it's there, at your discretion.
So can we get a bass boat?
Well, I guess if you want to go fishing, you can.
I'm against getting a bass boat. Okay.
But that's why I say, Dave, it's, it's, the ball's in your court now.
Well, I just said what I've, I mean, I feel like we need to table it. So I mean, it's, if it's in my court, my motion is to table this until we get a better review and an itemized review of what we're doing with $2.5 million.
Okay, I've got a question.
That we received from not, from out of the blue.
Okay. This, this money has not been designated for anything yet, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Let me, let me make an analogy here and explain to me if I'm, if I'm right on my thinking here, okay? Again, it's like if I say, hey, I'll buy your lunch today, you go out and buy lunch, and then come back, I say, how much was lunch? And you say, 20 bucks. I hand you a $20 bill. Is that kind of how this, how this went with the CARES Act money? These are expenditures that we've already made?
Yes, sir.
And that money is replacing that? So there's, what, what potential strings could we have on the backside of this?
As far as I know, none. It is pure reimbursement money for supplies, salaries, and equipment that we have already purchased.
And identified that it was CARES money?
And identified it was CARES money.
But we used our budget money.
And, and.
Now here's the money coming back.
Yes, sir. So again, it is your discretion on how to use this money. And all this is saying is, this is what we got. This is nothing that is, should be out of the realm of.
I tell you what, I'll second his motion. Let's go ahead and get some examination on this and, and get, you know, I'd rather we all be in agreement on accepting this. So I'll, I'll second his motion until we can get this ironed out.
Let me ask, would that hurt anything from the auditing side?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I have no problem with that either. Okay. So when?
But I, I will come back next court with the one for the excess sales proceeds unless you will agree to just doing that one in this court. I'll cross the first one off, and we can get that one done. Is that okay?
As for the.
We've done that, right?
Well, no, on this form, this special revenue form, the sales tax is on there.
That's fine.
Is that okay?
Sure.
So I'm going to take the CARES money off.
Well, that's fine with me. We've got four other people up here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm good with that.
All right.
You have a second.
Okay. There is a Mr. James Giratt here that would like to speak on this. Mr. Giratt, before we vote on here, we're going to have some other discussion, so would you like to enlighten us on this, please, sir? Is there anybody else who wants to speak on that?
I think it should be five minutes unless we change it.
Yes. Five minutes, sir.
Very good. Thank you for the explanation, because you answered my first two questions. Is it CARES money instead of the unanticipated revenue? And it is. And should it be called a grant? And I agree that it should be. And I don't know that it was covered clearly, but grants do have very specific reasons for dollars to be spent, and very specific reasons where dollars can't be spent. And I believe those are all listed here in the coronavirus CRF terms and conditions, which are signed by the county judge, the mayor, or city manager of a county and municipality. So we've agreed to these to get this $2 million, I guess, authority. But actually, I believe it's $2,500,000. Is it $2,500,000? Well, there's $500,000 that's already been brought over immediately. This was delayed.
So you say blown over, sir. It was given to businesses and individuals. Wasn't that the first $500,000 that came in?
Okay, so we have a.
The 20% of CARES money that first came in was given to small businesses and individuals in Hood County, the first $500,000. That came in, and that's what it was dispersed to?
Correct.
Okay, am I correct on that, Becky? I can't hear you, Becky. You're going to have to speak up. Correct. Send supplies for school. Yes, please.
When, as far as I remember, and I hope I remember this correctly, when the coronavirus hit this county, we were without supplies. We borrowed supplies from the school district. Dr. Jeremy Glenn helped us out. When time came for the schools to open, Dr. Glenn needed some supplies himself. So Jay Webster took care of the schools. And Dr. Glenn said, if it hadn't been for Hood County doing what they did, they probably could not have opened the schools. So y'all have done a wonderful job of taking care of this whole community, and I want to thank you for it. But that's where a lot of that went. That's how our schools are opened.
And I believe in my readings, that is one of the purposes for those COVID dollars. And I would assume that all of those are documented and auditable?
Yes, sir.
Great. Because that's one of the requirements of this act, is that they be documented and audited. And that's a Texas Department of Emergency Management audit or a federal audit, for that matter. And that's one of the things that, you know, the questions that I have up here, do we have an auditable, traceable explanation of all of these expenses? And I think that's what I hear the motion is all about. And I believe we've been assured that we're totally auditable. But I find something disturbing in this CRF terms and conditions. Fraud, waste, and abuse. It says, in the event the grantee becomes aware of any allegation or a finding of fraud, waste, or misuse of funds received from TDM that is made against the grantee, the grantee is required to immediately notify TDM of said allegation or finding, and to continue to inform them of the status. I believe there was an allegation made during the week that these funds, particularly the funds for the emergency wagon, were wasteful, if nothing else. Has TDM been notified? I have no other questions.
Okay.
You have a motion and a second, sir.
Okay. Is that all the people that want to speak on? Who was, oh, Nanette? Yes?
I just wanted to make a comment. As I understood, the way this process worked is taxpayer money was spent, and then this was a reimbursement of taxpayer money. So the comment that this isn't taxpayer money is a little gray. It seems like taxpayer money to me. And even if you say, that's not taxpayer money, money coming, coming from the federal government is taxpayer money. It, the government doesn't produce revenue. It's our taxpayer money. So whichever way you look at it, this is taxpayer money. So just wanted to make that comment. And I agree that we should have a detailed plan or detailed explanation of how the money was spent in the first place, what was reimbursed based on that, and then how the reimbursement money, the reimbursement of the taxpayer money will be spent in the future.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Eagle to table this item B1 for further clarification as to where the money was actually, I guess, not spent, because we still have the money up here and in the fund.
Yes, sir.
On the deal. It's just a clear explanation of how we got the money based upon what documentation Jay Webster filled out. And the first $500,000 that went for the school supplies, small business, the supplies for the school to reimburse the school, what happened to the small businesses that, that we had, and to individuals that got the first $500,000, correct?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to add that all expenditures were audited by TDM before we were ever cut a check.
Okay. All right. Okay. And now you want to go back and, and tell us, I guess, how we arrived at or got the
That is a detailed report, which I have provided to numerous people. Jay had requested this money, and that's how it came in. He, like I said, he requested the monies, and TDM audited it, and that's how we received the CARES money.
It would almost be just copying all of the reports and documentation that Jay Webster filled out?
That's correct. And I believe he's provided that to several people also.
Okay. But that's what we want to do then, to go ahead and say it again. I mean, the money's there, so we want to do it. So we got a motion to table a second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or call for the vote? Okay, so now I'll call.
Does it need to be broken down, because there's two parts to that? Does that, does that motion need to say, we table the first part, but not the, we have 1.455 million?
That's the sales proceeds. I didn't think we were talking about that.
Well, with it being in the same line item on the agenda.
Yes.
I just didn't know if the motion needed to reflect that you were going to strike it off of that.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
You will provide a whole new document?
With only sales tax on it.
With only the sales tax on it?
That's correct. If you'll just approve the 1.455 million.
Okay. So do y'all want a motion just approving the 1.455 million regarding the sales tax?
We already did that, Judge. Did the sales tax.
For the special revenue form. We did it. So all we have to do is to sign this, since we got. Well, you got it crossed off. You want us to initial this, that that's crossed off?
That's fine. I have to take the second half off, but you need to approve the special revenue for sales tax. And then that will close this item, and you can move on.
Okay, well, I'm going to initial it, and I'll sign it here then. So this, this will clear up the sales tax.
Yes, sir.
And then we still have the motion to table the, for further clarification, the $2,24,415. Y'all want to sign that down there? Okay.
Just, just make your vote and.
Huh?
Just vote this first part in.
Okay, so the first part is clear, everybody. All of us have signed it, initialled this. So now we're just wanting to table, the motion before the court is to table the $2,24,415 for Fund 101, made by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Andrews. And no further discussion. Let's go ahead and vote on whether to table it or not. All those in favor of tabling the motion for further clarification, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Now approve the second part to accept the special revenue form.
Okay. Here, a motion to approve the special audit revenue form that we've all signed that's been submitted by the Hood County Auditor's Office.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make that motion to, on the resolution on calling the county's tax notes, comma, series 2018, for redemption prior to maturity related to the library expansion.
Second, to approve the form, is this this one right here that you want, Becky?
No, Dave went on to item two. That one, you've tabled.
This is already done.
Okay, then we're good. Then item two is consider and take action on a resolution calling the county's tax note, series 2018, for redemption prior to maturity. We've talked about that. That's paying off the library. Commissioner Eagle has made a motion, and Mr. Wilson seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of calling for the resolution to redeem the county's tax note on series 2018 prior to maturity, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Item three, discuss certification of payment of invoices for the period January 7th, 2021 through January 20th, 2021, and discuss vendor payments over $10,000 and take appropriate action. You've all received advanced copies of the invoices that we would pay in this court, and a spreadsheet regarding invoices over $10,000. And I have sat down with each of you and talked about this. Are there any questions regarding any invoices or payments over $10,000?
Anybody have any questions, wish to discuss anything, or have any questions, or Ms. Kidd, regarding item B3, certification of payment of invoices? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to pay the bills, $5,000, $5,208,945.
Second. Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to pay the bills in the amount of $5,208,945, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Okay, next item.
Monthly reports. Gentlemen, you've all received copies of monthly reports that the Auditor's Office has reviewed and audited. We see no issues with these monthly reports and recommend accepting them.
I'll make a motion to accept the reports as noted in the agenda. Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Eagle to accept the reports received by the Audit Department for the various departments here in Hood County, second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Kidd. Okay. Under miscellaneous, this first item is discuss and take appropriate action to approve the painting of a mural in the teen section of the Hood County Library. The project will be funded by Randy and Teresa Turner and painted by local artist Reagan Demme. And we have our librarian here, Jennifer Logston. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
And by the way, congratulations on the beautiful article you put in the paper.
Oh, thank you.
You've done a great job.
Thank you.
And you're doing a great job for the library.
Thank you.
And all of Hood County.
It's an honor to be here. Randy and Teresa Turner would like to donate funds to have a mural painted in the teen area. They're doing this in honor of a son that they lost in a car accident many years ago, who was going to school to become a librarian, and he grew up going to the Hood County Library. And they would just like to have something to, to draw in teens and maybe warm up the area in the teen section. So we went to Reagan Demme. She helped with our other mural that was in the children's room, and she also just finished a big mural at, what's the place? There was a hotel. She was in the newspaper recently. Lake Veven, thank you. And anyway, so she's, she's done some, she's a local artist, and she's done a rendering of what we would like. She, she gave us two or three different ideas. We chose one. I emailed you pictures. It's going to encompass a corner in the teen room, and it'll be. room and it'll be kind of a fantasy looking thing with some floating tree islands with books, book lanterns, and some quotes from books that his son enjoyed.
And all this is donated and paid for by Randy and Teresa Turner?
Yes.
That's a very good deal. He's a very good artist, too.
Yes.
So you recommend that we allow this to happen?
I do.
Okay. Any further, you want to write this on this? Is that up to date now with this one? Okay.
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the painting of the mural on the teen section of the Hood County Library as presented by Ms. Logston.
Second that.
A motion been made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the painting of a mural in the teen section, as funded by Randy and Teresa Turner, painted by local artist Reagan Demme, second, Demme, second by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Logston.
Thank you.
Okay. Under miscellaneous, I remember too, discuss and take appropriate action on updated Tyler and Net Data contracts. Okay.
Gentlemen.
Now, I guess before we get started in this, is that we have two new commissioners here with us today. We've got Kevin Andrews, who's Commissioner at Precinct Number One. Welcome, sir. He's been a fixture around here for a long time and we've seen him a lot. And then we have Commissioner Jack Wilson for Precinct Number Three. And both of these gentlemen have told me when we saw this today that they would like to further review these contracts before we vote on it. And I think it's only fair that we do that. They've only been Commissioners since September, since January 1 when they took office. And certainly, if they want more time on this, I think that that has to be considered. And so I'm prepared, the chair is prepared to hear a motion to table this.
Judge, I'll make a motion we table.
Okay. A motion is made by Commissioner Andrews to table this, table action on the Tyler Net Data contract, second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay.
Good job, Drew.
Thanks for all your input.
Yeah.
All right. So now that brings us to item number three. I'm sorry for all those people that wanted to speak on this. We got like seven or eight speakers, but we'll postpone that. Item number three, authorize county judge to sign the Defense Logistics Agency disposition services, Lesco application for participation, the state plan of operations between the state of Texas and the following constable. Number one, Chad Davis, Constable Precinct One. Welcome, Constable Davis.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. This application, it requires your signature for me to apply. And pretty much Constable Thrasher was already a member. This is going to allow me to take over under him. The LISO program, for those who don't know, it's a military surplus kind of contract where we can get online and look, I'm not super familiar with it, but what I know, we can get online, get equipment surplus from them. Very useful. We can get vehicles, firearms, all kinds of stuff from them, and it's free to the county. So I just ask y'all to consider approving your signature. Thank you.
Thank you. I think this is a very good deal. Constable Thrasher did it. We can pick up some very good equipment on this thing. I make the motion that we allow the county judge to sign all the necessary documentation to allow Constable Chad Davis to participate in this program about buying the military surplus, or in some cases, just receiving it without doing it. So it's all strictly handled and paperwork and inventoried and audited. And Constable Thrasher did a good job and got some good equipment and supplies from doing this. And you want to continue that good work.
I'll second that.
Okay. So motion been made in second, second by Commissioner Andrews, to allow all the proper documentation to be signed by the county judge. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries five zero. Look forward to working with you, Constable Davis. Okay. Item number four, consider and take appropriate action regarding a personal injury claim. Our county attorney, Mr. Matt Mills.
Judge, is there any way to put this at the end? Because this will require executive session, maybe come back to it. Is that all right?
Yes.
It won't be too long, I hope, but it will be in an executive session, because it's proposed or it's threatened litigation against the county, so.
I agree with you.
Okay.
All right. So we'll, we will take item number four when we go into executive session with item number nine. This brings us to item number five, discuss and take appropriate action regarding rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the county commissioners' court dated February the 26th, 2013. Commissioner Eagle?
Yes, sir. So I took the liberty to place this on the agenda for a few reasons, but one of them was, three of us up here took office two years ago. So 60% of the court changed hands two years ago, and that would be Commissioner Cotton, the judge, and myself. And we never really got briefed on this, on the rules of decorum. I know you can go out online and all that kind of thing, but I was, I even had somebody with one of the departments in, into our second, third, fourth commissioners' court spout off Robert's rules, which we're really, we haven't adopted Robert's rules. So I wanted to take this opportunity to put the rules of decorum on the agenda to discuss. And the last time that they were, that they were signed and adopted was by the commissioners' court that was in existence in February of 2013. So it may be that there's nothing to change, but I wanted to go ahead and put this on the agenda so we could talk about this and answer questions for the benefit of our new commissioners. And I will, I'm going to pass down, it's a, it's a proposed rules of procedure, conduct, and decorum at meetings of the commissioners' court that was put out by the County Judges and Commissioners Association of Texas. General Counsel is Jim Allison, and I know that Mr. Allison is, I'm sure that, that our two new commissioners met him when they were in commissioner's school a couple of weeks ago. But the rules just lay out what should happen in court, especially for members of the public coming in to speak. It spells out when we're going to meet, and it talks about the business of the county, et cetera. And just to, just for a review or a quick overview, I want to go ahead and kind of go back to the basics of where, where does commissioners' court power come from? And the first place we always look is the Constitution. And the Texas Constitution and Article Five Judicial Department, Article Five is the judicial department of our Texas Constitution. And we're actually in Section One. It says that the judicial power of this state shall be vested in one Supreme Court, one Court of Criminal Appeals, the district courts, county courts, and commissioners' courts, and courts of justices of the peace, and in such other courts that may be provided by law. And for instance, we've got a county court at law now that Judge Messina sits in. And so after we look at the Constitution, that's where our power is derived, we go look to the statutes. And if you go to the Local Government Code 81, that entire statute discusses what the commissioners' powers and duties are, as, as far as what our job is and what we're supposed to do, et cetera. So as for these rules of conduct and procedure, one of the things that's stated in these that we haven't changed as far as I know is that they shall remain in full force and effect until amended or repealed by a majority vote of the commissioners' court. So they're, since they're eight years old, I just thought it would be a good idea. And I think there've been some questions about some of the items that are in the rules of decorum. And so I thought, well, I would put it on the agenda for us to talk about and, and let the public know what, that we do have these available online. And it might be a good idea for us to think about re-adopting them. And we may adopt them verbatim. We may make a few changes. I don't know. But I've also seen a copy coming up that, that the judge provided that came off of the Texas Association of Counties website, I think, which are a little bit nomenclatured a little bit differently than the ones that Mr. Allison sent, has, has out there online. So really, that's what it was about, was just to put it on the agenda, to let you guys know that we do have rules of decorum online. And I have looked at several counties, and most of the counties that I've looked at have something similar to these. They may be nomenclatured a little differently or numbered a little bit. Some of them have Roman numerals. Some of them have regular Arabic numbers. The one that was provided by the County Judges and Commissioners Association are Roman numeral and lettered and numbered. So it's, it's got, where you can at least cite to the position that you're wanting to take or, or to see what applies to a particular issue. So that's really, Judge, I just wanted to kind of put that out and put it for discussion if somebody wanted to ask questions, talk about it. And, and, because I've got an item that's directly after this that may play into, should, are we going to change? Are we going to make any additions or deletions? But I wanted to start out with the rules of decorum and just open it up, I guess.
Okay. Well, let me say this. As soon as you put this on the agenda, and I like the fact that the rules of procedure state that any request to be put on the agenda has got to come by through one of the commissioners or the county judge. That's how it's put on the agenda. And no commissioner and no county judge can prevent any item from being put on the agenda once it's sponsored by a commissioner or a county judge. So if any citizen wants to put something on the agenda, you just have to contact one of the commissioners. You usually go to one of the commissioners that are in your precinct, but it's not necessary. Or you can come to the county judge, talk to him. It'll be put on the agenda. I've never known of anybody to refuse to put anything on the agenda. I know I'd never refused to put anything on the agenda. And I've never heard of any citizen saying, I went to a commissioner, tried to get something on the agenda, and they wouldn't put it on the agenda. But it needs to be put on by 12 noon on the Wednesday, immediately preceding the next regular meeting. The reason for this, it gives everybody the opportunity to do the necessary research to find out whether you approve that item or you disapprove that item. So you don't surprise anybody with it. I think that's, that's just a fair way of doing things, and that's what it is. So what I did when Commissioner Eagle put this on, I literally contacted the judges surrounding Hood County. That's Judge Harmon in Johnson County, Judge Dean in Parker County, Judge Campos in Ereth County, and Judge Chambers in Somerville County, and asked them to send me copies of their rules of procedure and conduct and decorum at their meetings. They all did. And I also got the ones that the county judges' association promulgated back in 2019. Like Commissioner Eagle says, they're all basically the same. So what we would do is just have to compare them line item by line item. The only big difference that I saw is that the judges, the commissioners' court surrounding us and in the form promulgated by the county judges' association was that they meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month, where we meet on the second and fourth Tuesdays, and always have. I personally, this is what Hood County has always done, as far as I can remember from people going back, talking to my predecessors and people that have worked for the county. And I think it does give us an opportunity to get documents together on the preceding Monday to present to court then on Tuesday. But I'm all in favor of that. I think it needs to be voted on. And all we have to do is just literally compare, because the form that Commissioner Eagle presented to us, I'm sure that it's straight from that. But you have to type in like Hood County and make the change to, I don't know, it has second and fourth Mondays on his form, and that needs to be changed to second and fourth Tuesdays. So I'm all in favor of it. And it's like every other county in the state that I know of, but certainly the four counties that surround Hood. So I'm for doing it, but I'd like to go ahead and compare it. And we all get a chance to read it just line item by line item to make sure that everything is in the form. So, and I think, and I agree with Commissioner Eagle that, from talking to him here this morning, that the item, the next item about discuss and take action regarding a standing agenda item entitled Citizens' Comments to Rules of Procedure and Conduct, that needs to be discussed a little bit also. So that would have an effect on how the general rules would be, too. So I'm all in favor of adopting new rules based upon what the government has put out for commissioners' court and what those courts have adopted around us. So I think before we, I think we probably need to wait until we see if we want to add anything to that rules of procedure and contact after we discuss the next item.
And Judge, my, my idea for both of these items was to do just what we're doing and talk about it. I'm not, I wasn't advocating that we actually adopt any, you know, adopt them as it is, for instance, because I think there's some, you know, there's some format issues and some, you know, I think there's, we can clean them up where they look-
Yeah.
You know, and we can-
I agree with that.
And so, and, and then redate them, you know, we'll be, we'll be a new court signing off on them. And the only thing, you know, so the second item, if you want to go to that, Judge, that I put on there that's related to this, item number six, is related to citizens' comments. And I know that there's people, let me just give you a little background on it. Before I was elected to commissioner, elected as a commissioner, I got very active in the local government. I'd kind of given up on the federal side of it because, well, you see what's going on with that. It's, you know, I don't know what to say about it, except it's a lost cause for a conservative. And so, in my opinion, local government's where it's at. And one of the things that, that I, that I was interested in long before I got into office, and I talked to the former commissioner that sits right, that sat right in this seat, that I felt like the city of Granbury has a citizens' comments, where citizens can just walk in there and sign up and talk about something related to the city. They don't have to put it on an agenda. They can just come up and, and speak about it. And the, the parameters are that if it's not, if it's not on the agenda, and they, they bring a topic up that's not on the agenda, we can't talk back to them. All we can do is sit here and listen and thank them for their time. And maybe there's something that we can put in a note that maybe it's something we can do later. I don't know. The citizen comments, I'm just going to read from the city of Granbury. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted at this time for comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda, not listed on the agenda. The city council will be allowed to receive input and information for future agenda items, for instance, but will not be allowed to enter any discussions. Now, and of course, the city is a home rule company, company, home rule city, and they, they can adopt rules as they see fit. But this is still under the Open Meetings Act of Texas Government Code 551. I also took the liberty to, I thought, well, is the city the only place, are there any county- counties that do this? Well, yeah, there are, actually. Stevens County actually has a standing Resolutions, Announcements, and Public Comments section on their, right up on the front of their meeting. And that's every time, the city does it every other, once a month, they allow the citizen comments. Also went to the Tarrant County Commissioners Court, and they have a citizens' comment section on the Tarrant County website, that Tarrant County Commissioners allow people to come speak. In a time, in the time that we're in right now, where we have masters of the universe, Google, and Facebook, and Twitter, and some of these information providers absolutely censoring people, people, there's a lot of people out here that are not being heard. And I think that at the local level, people need to be heard. And so I put this on the agenda to discuss, I'm just one guy up here, there's four other people up here. I just put this on the agenda to discuss the possibilities because, you know, sometimes we just need to, we're the, the Commissioners Court, by the way, to get back to the agenda, the Commissioners and the county judge are the only people that can put something on the agenda. And so if anyone, like the judge said, if somebody wants something on the agenda, they need to contact their commissioner or the county judge and say, "Hey, I've got an item here I'd like to put on the agenda." And most of the time, like the judge said, we're going to go along with it unless it's just, you know, I really can't think of an example why we wouldn't. But we also have the business of the county, our function is to take care of the business of the county. Now, that's a wide open parameters. There's a lot of businesses, a lot of business that has to be done to take, take care of the business of the county, but that's what we do. And so sometimes, maybe something comes up where a citizen wants to come in here and speak to us about something that's not on the agenda. I know that's not a popular idea with some people, but I'm just putting it on here and putting it out on the table, and opening it up for, again, just a discussion.
Here's, here's my comment about that. You take a citizen that talks, like I said, no, I have no example of anybody ever saying, "Hey, I brought an item up to a commissioner to be put on the agenda, and the commissioner refused to do it, will you go ahead and sponsor it yourself?" That's never happened to me. And I've never refused to put anything on the agenda when a citizen has brought it to me. There's a lot of times that if they want to come back and talk to me about it, I can even refer them to a department or to law to let them go ahead and do additional research and find out for themselves as to what they can know about this. But the big thing is, rather than coming down here and just give me what you want to say about this, the, every one of the rules that have it says that you should put the request must be filed by, and approved by at least one member of the Commissioners Court and/or the county judge by 12:00 noon on the Wednesday immediately preceding the next regular meeting. All this does is give you an opportunity for both the fours and against to have a fair start on the research. What's, what's wrong with that? I mean, you're never going to have to wait more than that period of time, and that's what it's done. I don't know why you would want to say that you just want to bring up something right here in the court when nobody has a chance to investigate or to do their own independent research. That's the whole basis for this rule here. Now, you're still never going to be deprived of what you want to say. If you want to say something, you are going to be allowed to say it. Just put it on the agenda on the Wednesday preceding the Tuesday's meeting. And it goes out, and that's the whole person, it goes out on the notice, it's on the bulletin board, it's on our website, and everybody gets an opportunity to find out what's everybody's putting on the agenda. That happens to be my personal preference, and in talking to the judges around here, the judge that I really like, I guess is kind of my mentor, is Judge Harmon in Johnson County, because he's been the county judge there for almost 26 years. And he says that they always do it that way, so that they can talk about it and have the notice, and they're very strict about the fact that it has to be there. They have it on the Tuesday preceding deals because they do it on the Monday, but they have the full same opportunity to investigate the agenda item. So that's what I'm saying. But we have some people that want to speak on that, and that's on item number six here, and we have one, two, three, four, five, six people. So we got six, so you can have five minutes apiece. The first person to sign up was Victoria Calder, Ms. Calder. Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to this item. I'm absolutely in favor of it for several reasons. First of all, I think there can be an unfortunate stereotype that citizens are there to gripe, and that may be the case, and I do think it is important to hear concerns, but, and I agree, in a perfect world, the procedure that should be followed and typically would be followed is to request of a commissioner or the judge an opportunity for a specific item to be on the agenda by Wednesday of the, the prior Wednesday before the meeting. However, in this world of rapidly changing events and the rapidity of information flow that we have, I think that there, it's important to consider the fact that there might be occasions where immediacy of an issue, there is some measure of immediacy. In other words, the issue might not be on the radar of anyone the Wednesday prior to the meeting. Something could have come up yesterday or this morning that's of, of some level of criticality, whether it be an incident, an emergency management incident, for instance, or something that is an evolving event in the community, or in the country, or in the region, that would require, that would necessitate citizen input. It wouldn't have been on anyone's radar the prior Wednesday. And this is really just talking about citizens giving input. That input might well inform the discussions that ensue in that Commissioners Court meeting on that day. It might also inform a future agenda item, which would go through, to your point, Judge, that procedure that is in place. But at least consider the fact that there could be evolving events, immediacy, as some measure of immediacy, that would bring about the import of getting, of you getting the input from your constituents that morning in that way. So that's all I'm thinking. And realize, too, there's a wealth of resources among the citizens in the community. You have people who are currently employed with FEMA Homeland Security, people who are in the field that you're discussing that day, whether it be real estate, or finance, or something that might be able to offer a teachable moment, an educationable, education piece in that citizen comment that would help guide the discussion that might ensue. So just asking for you to consider the human resources as a valuable asset among your citizens, and that there can be situations that would not allow the typical procedure to occur. Thank you for that consideration, I appreciate you putting this, and I am totally in support of this.
Thank you, Ms. Calder.
Judge, can I say something?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I think it's a very good point. Just so everybody understands, we have a procedure in Commissioners Court. If we have an emergency, we can call for a Commissioners Court meeting with the one notice of one hour, and we have done that. We did that through an emergency management coordinator wanting to give us an update on security, and we called for a meeting, and so if we've got something like that, I agree, that, that needs to be, if it's an emergency, we can take and open up court and have it in an hour and get through it. So if it wasn't an emergency and it could wait until the next week, then we could put it on the agenda. It's not an emergency, you can't make 12:00 noon on the Wednesday before court on Tuesday. The reason I'm for that is, I think, for transparency, I want the people to know what we're going to talk about. That's why we put the agenda out, 72 hours posted, so people know what we're going to talk about, and there's no surprises, "Well, gee, if I'd known you was going to talk on that, I'd have been there to talk on it." So those are my comments on, on yours, and very good, thank you.
Can I say one more quick thing?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I, I did use the example of what if there's an emergency incident, but it might not be an emergency incident. It might just be an important issue of the community that is emerging and, with some rapidity and recency. So maybe, like I say, this morning or yesterday, there could have been a community event, a non-emergency, that still would benefit from citizens being able to speak to it with some level of immediacy before waiting till the next Commissioners Court.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to debate with you, you had your time, but I couldn't resist it-
No, I'm glad, no, I appreciate-
-explaining what, where I'm coming from.
No, I totally appreciate that, and it was my, my bad in using an emergency as an example. It might not be an emergency, it might just be an important issue to the citizens that didn't come up the prior Wednesday.
But, Ms. Calder?
Yes.
It's like, I know what issue you had up here, because you've spoken eloquently before this Commissioners Court, before here. But what if somebody on the other side wanted to just bring up something that was contrary to your position and didn't have it on the agenda? So you wouldn't have an opportunity to be here to put forth your argument. Do you see how unfair that could be to you? That if somebody that had a diametrically opposed position to you said, "I'm not going to say anything, I'm not going to get a commissioner, I'm just going to wait until the Commissioners Court, and then, since there's no rule about this, I'm just going to come up there and say something."
But I, I see, yeah.
It gives you the opportunity to meet and give the other side of the argument, so-
Yes.
Like Commissioner Eagle says, if it's an immediacy problem, we have the emergency meeting, we can do it in an hour on the deal. But it's better to have both sides prepared. That's why in a trial, in law or anything, you have notice requirements where both sides are given the same opportunity to present their side of the story. That's the fairness doctrine.
And that's a very important issue, and in my mind, too, and I agree with you. However, the purpose of the citizens' comments, as I understand it, isn't a debate, and it isn't for the Commissioners to discuss at all that day necessarily, it's to give voice. And anyone could do that about anything at any time, just as with city council, it doesn't mean that somebody didn't get a chance to say an opposing view, because it's just a citizen expressing their view, like they might on social media for that matter. But it's on your radar to perhaps put on a subsequent agenda for everyone to show up and, and give differing opinions. It's just a-
I think you've had your five minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Steve Biggers.
Hey, good morning, Court. How are you guys? And good morning, Commissioner Wilson and Andrews, on your maiden voyage in the chair. Congratulations. October, or May 30th last year, the Constitutional Coalition of Texas had a meeting downtown on the square to meet the runoff candidates. And what we did there is we streamed this out to the county, and we fielded a lot of questions from the county's citizens to, to submit their questions in their, that they wanted these people to answer. Mr. Andrews was there, Mr. Wilson was there, Mr. Lang was there, and Mr. Cook was there. And there was a whole variety of questions that, that came that way, and we tried to, to boil them down to eight questions that might be pertinent at the time, and some of them that just came out of left field that were pretty interesting, too. The, the obvious ones were there, the governor, COVID, lockdowns, the tax base here in the county, those obvious ones were there. But some of them came out of left field, which were pretty interesting. One was safe sanctuary Second Amendment-type resolution that they did on guns for the sanctity of life. Somebody brought that up, and we got, we got the opinions on what the commissioner said. One of them was why the private school kids couldn't, or, or homeschool kids couldn't participate in some of the high school sports, because they pay taxes. So that, that was brought up. One of the questions that was brought up was, why can't the citizens have something like the city of Granbury has to just offer discussion items at maybe even more of a little convenient time than, than Tuesday mornings, because everybody's working, those kinds of things? And, and all the commissioners spoke very favorable with that. I went back and reviewed the recording of that. Both the current new commissioners thought very favorable with that, that, that citizens should have a right to be able to voice some of their concerns. And, and certainly with the situation we're in, we cannot possibly think that all great minds in the county are in this room right now. We have to understand that there are people walking the streets out there that don't have time to track down their commissioner, that don't have time to make a proposal, to send in the requirements to do that, but may have an absolutely wonderful idea that they want to throw out there and discuss, and, and put it in your all's wheelhouse that something may come up. Now, in light of today's complexion in society, we, we need to keep in mind that there's 75 million people out there that just felt slighted on the national level, and certainly with the debacle of the last Commissioners Court with the farce of this RV, there's half the county out there that wasn't represented. So these people are going to eventually come to the gates with the pitchforks and the torches if we don't start listening to them. All we're asking is to say, "Let's dedicate 30 minutes for people to come up and say, 'I live on a dead-end street and I want a speed bump.'" Well, that's stupid, that's absolutely crazy. But, hey, every time it rains, there's a flood problem here that you guys may not be in and own of in your precinct, that you weren't brought to your attention. We're just, I, I don't really want to think there's an arrogance here that you guys asked for people to put you in the chair, and then you don't want to hear their opinions after you put you in the chair. Thanks a lot.
Kate Criswell.
And just to be clear, Judge, are we speaking on five or six, or have these been combined today?
You look.
The items, I'm sorry, agenda item six, seven, or have these been combined today?
I think it's both five and six.
It's five and six.
All right. So, good morning, gentlemen. Congratulations, Jack Wilson, Kevin Andrews. Appreciate seeing you guys behind the dice, look forward to seeing what you guys have to offer here. Thank you for taking this item up for consideration. It's important that the members of this body understand the rules and that the rules are applied fairly. To the court, I ask that should any changes to the rules be adopted, that they increase transparency, accountability, and citizen input. I also ask that we keep the current rule that requires a majority vote to shorten or lengthen citizen input as opposed to unilateral action by the presiding officer. I also ask that you consider a provision be made to prohibit members of this court from interrupting citizens that come to participate, though follow-up questions would be appropriate. And as far as the citizen input section, allowing citizen input to speak on items not on the agenda, whether it's at every meeting or once a month, I think would be a good thing. And contrary to what was stated earlier, commissioners and judges have been known to refuse to place items on the agenda after consulting with few people, and going off some personal experience there. This is not only a transparency issue, it's a free speech issue, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Annette Samuelson.
I just had to roll-
Pull that out.
Yeah, I'm not as tall as everyone. So I was going to maybe pass, because I agreed with everything Victoria had to say. I think it's a good idea, I think there are things that come up in the community, and again, thank you for giving me this time to talk, and welcome to the new commissioners. The only thing, I just don't really see any downside to it, because nobody's asking for a vote or a debate, it's just bringing something to your attention, and I don't really see a downside to it. If someone else has something to say, they can, they're welcome to come up and speak about it as well. So I, I just don't see a downside to allowing input from the citizens that's not, some item that's not on the agenda. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Zach Maxwell.
Thank you so much for having me today. I wanted to discuss this important topic because in, in my time in the Texas Legislature, as you all know- as you all know, formerly a Texas House staffer, and we took citizen comment very seriously. They had many opportunities to be able to come in, but they also had an opportunity to sit down and discuss it during committee hearings. But we also passed a law just recently reinforcing the Open Meetings Act, you know, and I think Hood County can do better than that, because I don't think that we need the Texas Legislature telling us what we need to be doing at the local level. Sure, there are things, you know, that we can discuss, being a function of the state, you know, they can, they do have power to do that, but why do we need them to tell us that we need to listen to our constituents? As previously stated, the City of Granbury does a really good job at sitting down and listening to citizen comments. I don't believe that there is a downside, because there are things that do come up that citizens want to make it clear to their Commissioners and the county judge. Now, one thing I would like to point out also is that the City of Granbury, the city council and the mayor, that's a volunteer position. They're not paid to sit down and to listen and to do the duties and the responsibilities of the city. But they take an extra 30 minutes every meeting to see if a citizen would like to come up and address any issues that they see fit. And I think that it is only fair for Commissioners' Court that most of you make, just with your Commissioner's salary alone, double what the median income is of this community. And I think that it is only fair that they get their opportunity to be able to come up and discuss those things. For example, something that is not on the agenda right now, but has been discussed in the past, but is still a very present issue, there's a big discussion right now on whether to create an emergency services district in our community. I have actually taken the time to go out and talk to some of the firefighters in the community. I go to church with some of them, some of them are my friends. I've talked to a chief in one of the fire departments. There is a real issue going on with that, with that, with the funding that the county has for the fire departments. You know, and I sometimes, you know, one day I'd like to come up here and be able to say, even though it's not on the agenda, "Hey, guys, I'd like to remind you that that's still an issue, that's still a problem. We need to make sure that we're doing a good job for our firefighters that are risking their lives on a volunteer basis." So, again, and my question that I really want to pose to y'all is, what is the downside? And is there any sort of fear that you have of a citizen coming up and addressing an issue? Because it is not something that you would be taking action on. That's what an agenda item is for, is, once the discussion has been had, perhaps in the public light, then you can discuss with an agenda item. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Ms. Sharon Sehlander.
I have a little trouble with my back today, so excuse me.
Could you pull that down a little bit?
I also am for this. I agree with Victoria, a lot of what she had to say. I just want to add to the conversation, these emergencies are things that people might want to talk to, about to bring to your attention. And what Zach just talked about, I think that one is still prominent out in the media, in that people talking about it. Also, the RV, I think there's some more discussion that needs to happen with our new emergency vehicle. I want to bring up two examples. One was the last meeting, where you read the agenda when you're, before you come to court, and you look at it, and it doesn't look like it's something you want to speak on. But after discussion starts in the meeting, all of a sudden, there's things that, wait a minute, there's things there I'd like to speak about, but I didn't sign up. So maybe they want to bring it up in the next, the citizens, to bring it back to your attention of some of their thoughts on the idea. The other one, doesn't have anything to do with the court, I mean, the county, but it's just an idea of emergencies that happen after your Wednesday-type thing, is like, in the Saturday paper, there was a little blip about how the sewer plant was going to start releasing water into the lake. Well, a lot of people might not have signed up to talk to the city council about that or whatever, because it wasn't ahead of time that they knew about it. So it's something they might want to talk about. So that's an example of why you'd want to have this type of program. Okay, thank you.
Won't you go ahead and say what we were talking about today? You're reaching a bunch of people here today about the meeting.
Right.
Scheduled for tonight. Would you go ahead and make a public announcement, please?
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. I'd ask the Judge if I could make an announcement, that the Hood County Republican Club has canceled their meeting for tonight. There's concerns for the COVID and that in our county at the moment, and we just want to take precautions and make sure we keep everybody safe. So we'll be back February, so come then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sehander. Okay. Okay, Mr. Granik, you got it right under the wire. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners and Judge. I really didn't want to talk.
Go ahead, yeah.
Really didn't want to talk, but I just want to make comments. Seems like I'm all in favor of free speech, but also the meeting should be reasonable. Maybe there could be a compromise, that there could be every meeting 30 minutes set aside. I like to be able to read before the meetings an agenda, see is there something that I want to explore or discuss? And if you just have that someone shows up, if it's not an emergency, then notifying on the Wednesday before allows us to see on the agenda, items that can be discussed have some kind of time limit, so a meeting doesn't go on for hours and hours on the discussions, and I'll keep my comments brief, so this doesn't go on any longer. So I agree with the concept, but the functionality, I think, should be worked out. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a suggestion on this thing. I think that what the Commissioners need to do is to go ahead and actually type out and have to consider the actual rules and regulations, so that we can pass them around and look at them, and then vote on them at the next time. I mean, this, it's not like voting on a specific item. We've got pages of rules, so that we all got to understand what we're actually voting on. So I would like to make a motion that we table the rules and procedures and conduct, and we go ahead and adopt something that we're going to propose. I know I have one that I'd like to propose, based upon what the county association has done, and it's got to be changed, like in your submission here, Commissioner Eagle, you have, you know, the second and fourth Mondays, you know? That's got to be changed to second and fourth Tuesdays. We've got to top in Hood. There's a lot of stuff that we have to fill in, so I'd like to go ahead, let's go ahead and have some proposed rules, and then come back and have an open discussion about it. So I move that we table it and go ahead and prepare rules, so that we can present it to the next Commissioners' Court.
Would we need to do that in a, like a workshop-type environment?
Yes, exactly.
An open meeting, where we can get in there and exchange ideas? And, I mean, I know there are a couple of things in here that I'd like to see changed.
That's fine with me, too. That's what I was saying.
One thing that Mr. Eagle said is open discussion. Yes, if we allow citizen participation, there's no dialogue back and forth. We listen, that's it. There will be no action, that's what he said, no action. All we do is make notes, to put it on the agenda later. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. And I just want to point out, and I know the Judge has a motion on the table, to table, but I will point out Article 4, subsection D, capital D, of the current rules decorum we've got, and the ones we're probably going to be adopting. I just want to make a note, for the record, that it says, "It is the intention of the Court to provide an open access to the citizens of Hood County to address the Commissioners' Court and to express themselves on issues of county government." So I'm, I know that we need to do some tweaking and pass around a copy of what we want to put on the table next time or the time thereafter, but I, again, my purpose for putting it on the agenda today was to hear people speak about it, and I know the City of Granbury somehow has survived having such an item on their agenda, and so, and that's, some people may think that us not being able to answer them is a good thing. So, anyway, with that said...
I'll second the Judge's motion to table.
Okay, so a motion been made in second to table this, give us an opportunity to maybe come up and prepare in a workshop, since we can't get together in violation of the Open Meetings, I can talk about it, but circulate some rules and have it where we can vote on it in an open court meeting. So, any further discussion about this? Do I call for the vote? All those in favor of tabling the motion about having the rules and also addressing the citizens' comments? We can do that in one document or not? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, this brings us then to the item to discuss and take appropriate action for consideration to waive the 2021 payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program for the Granbury Housing Authority. Is anybody here going to speak on this? This is, this is where it's a public housing situation, and we always, as long as this public housing has waived the right to tax the low-income housing. Am I correct on that, Ms. Kidd?
Sure.
So, we've done that for the two years that I've been here, and I think it's a good idea to do that. Do you agree with that, Ms. Kidd?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Does any Commissioner wish to discuss any further discussion on that pilot program about waiving the collection of taxes on the low-income housing project? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to waive the 2021 payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program for Granbury Housing Authority.
Okay, motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Cotton has made a motion to waive the 2021 payment in lieu of taxes, the pilot program for the Granbury Housing Authority, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. All right, the next item, discuss and take appropriate action to award RFB 2020-007 County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Service to Midas as a primary vendor, and to Expressway Car Care as the first alternate purchasing agent. Mr. Glenn Tillman?
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. RFB 2020-7 was opened on January 7th, 2021, at 11:00 a.m. in the purchasing department. After examining the bids and discussing it with the Sheriff's Office, who has the largest fleet in the county, it's a suggestion of purchasing to award the primary vendors as Midas and an alternate vendor as Expressway Car Care. These vendors are best able to meet the needs of the county and provide the best value to the county.
Okay. Chief, would you come up here? I know that the last time that we had here, we tabled this to give you an opportunity to check with the vendors that could supply this service for our fleet maintenance, and in looking at what you supplied to us, these were the only two vendors that actually met the qualifications, weren't they?
That is correct.
So, you're recommending that we go ahead and improve as recommended by the purchasing agent?
I do.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To award RFB 2020-007 County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Service to Midas as the primary vendor, and to Expressway Car Care as the first alternate vendor.
Second.
Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle to award RFB 2020-007 County Fleet Maintenance and Repair Service to Midas as the primary vendor, to Expressway Car Care as the first alternate, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. All right. This brings us to the next item, which is to discuss and take appropriate action to designate the agenda clerk for the Hood County Commissioners' Court to be responsible for the intake of proposed agenda items and for compiling the items to be placed on the Commissioners' Court agenda pursuant to Article 5, Section 18 of the Texas Constitution, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, and Texas AG Opinion JM-0063. We're going to convene into executive session to discuss this, and also to discuss Item 4, that our county attorney, Matt Mills, has brought up concerning the personal injury claim. So at this time, I'm adjourning the Commissioners' Court into executive session. Thank y'all very much. Okay, we're going to convene back into the Commissioners' Court from being in executive session, and the first item we're going to take up is consider and take appropriate action regarding the personal injury claim. Do I hear a motion from the Commissioners?
Well, I'm trying to get there.
I make a motion that we deny the personal injury claim.
Second.
Motion been made by County Judge Massengill, seconded by Commissioner Eagle, that the Commissioners' Court deny the personal injury claim that's been made. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Okay, the next item, discuss and take appropriate action to designate the agenda clerk for the Hood County Commissioners' Court to be responsible for the intake of proposed agenda items and for compiling the items to be placed on the Commissioners' Court agendas. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Brenda, your assistant, and Shannon Kaiser jointly to work together on creating the agendas.
I'll second that.
Okay, a motion has been made by Commissioner Eagle for Brenda Lampert, my administrative clerk, and Shannon Kaiser, the Commissioners' Court administrative clerk, to work together on the, compelling the agenda for the Commissioners' Court. Any further discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0.